When does a customer become a client? When she is shown a property by a licensee, when she enters into an agency relationship with a licensee, when she meets with a specific property, or when a licensee assigns an agency agreement. Alright, so we had some differences between the two. So it is when she enters into an agency relationship with a licensee. So we're talking about the customer becoming a client. So when the licensee signs an agency agreement, that's just the licensee signing it. It's, you know, and a client, you don't necessarily have to, you can have it as, let me put it this way, there can be implied agency. So even though you haven't signed an agreement in Ohio, if they believe they're in an agency relationship with you, they can become a client. So, you know, if you've acted in a way that acts as an agency relationship, then they can, you know, they can say that they are a client of yours. Now, if you want to solidify that, definitely sign a license, sign an agency agreement, and there can be implied agency. So it's, again, sometimes they ask you these questions, they can be a little tricky, and that's why I give them to you this way as well, so that, you know, you can understand the nuances of it. So when she enters into an agency relationship with a licensee. Alright, next up, let's see where everybody fell out. Alright, Jimmy's up top, you said you were excited, you said you were ready. Alright, let's keep it going. Who approves the governor's appointments to the Real Estate Commission? The state senate, Appointments Committee of the Governor's Political Party, Commerce Committee of the State of the House of Representatives, or the State Supreme Court? Alright, so not a lot of people got that one. So Commerce Committee of the State of the House of Representatives, it is the state senate that approves the governor's appointments, because think the governor's state senate, so that approves the governor's appointments to the Real Estate Commission. So, you know, it's not the court, it's not the Commerce Committee of the House of Representatives, because I think House of Representatives are congress, congressmen and congresspeople. So governors are senate, you know, state senate. So the state senate is the one that approves that, okay? Alright. Ooh, we got a new leader. Oh, got somebody waiting in the waiting room. One man? Okay, a new leader on the leaderboard. Let's go. The fee for renewing a broker's license is $149, $259, $139, or $243? Yes, so a broker's license is different than an agent's license. So that's why it's $243 and not the $149. I see where a lot of people got confused on that one. And, uh, so, yeah. That is a question for state. So not a national question, that's a state question. Same with the last one, would be a state question. We did a lot of national last time, so I'm doing a little bit more state this time, adding a little bit more state in there, okay? Alright. So where are we at? Ooh, yes, you know, leaderboard is changing. Alright. You can have reasons or results, Jimmy, can't have both. Alright, let's keep it going. The offer or is the person who performs as agreed, accepts the offer, makes the offer, or breaches the contract? And it is makes the offer. So the offer or makes the offer, offeree, so accepts the offer, that would be the offeree if they accepted the offer, or the person that, you know, is the offer is made to. So that is the offeree, offer or the person who makes the offer. Ooh, Jimmy back on top, you know, he couldn't be held down. Five, what would be considered evidence of the agency relationship between broker and buyer? A listing agreement, an agency disclosure statement, a buyer-broker contract, or a power of attorney? Alright, so a little confusion on that one. Okay, so it is a buyer-broker contract. So it is the evidence of the agency relationship between the broker and the buyer. A listing agreement would be between the seller and the broker, and an agency disclosure statement is what you give on first contact to disclose agency relationships. So that's just a disclosure statement, it actually does not bind anyone to anything. And always feel free, if you have a question about any of this, to throw it in the chat or speak up. Alright, where are we at? Ooh, man, that's a tight race, a lot of changes happening in here. Alright, Harvey enters into a lease where he must pay 30% of the landlord's expenses. Which type of lease did Harvey sign? A gross lease, a percentage lease, a net lease, or a land lease? He has to pay 30% of the landlord's expenses, which did he sign? Alright, okay, let's see who got it. Alright, a lot of people across the board. Okay, so it's a net lease. And the reason it's a percentage lease is when you pay a percentage of the profit that you make in your business on that lease. So I know they put percent in there to throw you off, to make you think it's a percentage lease. But a percentage lease is only a lease where you pay a percentage of the profit you make on your business to the landlord. A net lease is a lease where you actually pay a percentage, some or all, of the utilities, or, and actually I can show the media here. So, yeah, where you pay a portion of, in some cases, all of the owner's expenses. So that's what it is. So, and a gross lease is where landlord pays their own expenses. And a land lease is on land. So, you know, you wouldn't really pay a percentage of that. Alright, so let's see who is moving. Ooh, just the bottom of the board, okay? Genuine assent means a contract can be binding even under duress, a contract can be binding even under fraud, a contract can be binding even under undue influence, or consent must be freely given before a contract can be legally binding. Alright, so yes, if it's genuine assent, it means that they really meant it, that no one put any pressure on them to do otherwise. All of the other ones are under pressure, and they can be, you know, null and void, they can be voided, they're voidable, as you say. So any of those other contracts are voidable, because if they're under duress, if there's fraud, or if there's undue influence, then that contract can be voided. Consent must be freely given for a contract to be legally binding. Just always remember, no one can hold a gun to your head and make you perform and sign a contract that is legal in a court of law. So if it's legally binding, genuine assent has to be given. Ooh, TWM streak with three answers in a row, pulling away on fire. A contract in which each party took agreement has an obligation under that agreement is a unilateral contract, tendering performance, a bilateral contract, or a breach of contract? It is a bilateral, everybody got that one right. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move on, y'all know that one. Alright. A dual agent cannot act in a biased manner towards either buyer or seller, negotiate on behalf of either buyer or seller, advocate for either buyer or seller, or all of the answers listed. And it's all of them. Alright, so we had some people that said act in a biased manner toward either buyer or seller. So if they're acting in a biased manner, then they can't do that, because that means they're, you know, favoring one or the other. And if you're a dual agent, you can't do that. I think I talked about this last time. As an agent, you can act as a coach to your clients. You can help them win the game, so to speak. When you're a dual agent, you have to be a referee. You have to be fair and impartial to both sides. So that's all of those answers listed you cannot do, because you cannot negotiate on either behalf, you can't advocate for either side, and you can't act in a biased manner for either one. You have to be fair and impartial and be a referee. Alright. Man, five correct answers in a row, yes, get it. In most states, the listing broker has a fiduciary duty to the salesperson, the buyer, the customer, or the client. Now, this is the listing broker, who's the fiduciary duty to? So it is to the client. So the broker's duty is to the client, the salesperson's duty is to the broker. And because the broker's duty is to the client, then that salesperson's duty is also to the client. So that's how that works. But a broker's duty, because when you sign an agreement, the client is signing with the brokerage, they're signing with the firm. So they're not signing with the agent. Alright, and I thought I mixed these up a little better. When the principal terminates the agency relationship before it expires, it is called renunciation, revocation, repudiation, or rescission? Alright, and it's revocation. So we had a few people, a couple people that said renunciation, rescission. So a right of rescission is if you change your mind after the fact, it kind of takes it back. So in mortgages, you had like a three-day right of rescission, where you can change your mind, and then it can, you can, you know, cut the deal out and go back. Renunciation is to renounce, and so it's revocation. So you revoke the contract, or you revoke the agency relationship, so it's revocation. And that's when the principal terminates the agency relationship before it expires. Alright, a little bit of movement there. What document serves as escrow instructions? A listing agreement, good faith estimate, a purchase agreement, or a HUD one settlement statement? Escrow instructions? Alright, so a lot of confusion there. So it is the purchase agreement. So the escrow instructions are on the purchase agreement. So every, the purchase agreement is the contract. So it's the instructions on how everything is gonna go. Your HUD one settlement statement is at the end. So this is the statement that they send out to say, is everything correct essentially? Like, this is how everything's gonna disperse, so it's not an instruction for it. It's basically saying, this is what we've done. Your listing agreement, that's just between the seller and the brokerage. So that doesn't go into escrow, it's not a contract of any sort of contractual changing of property. And a GFE, a good faith estimate, is what a lender sends out when they start the loan process, to let you know what your percentage rate is, all that kind of stuff. So that's your good faith estimate. So your purchase agreement is the instructions, because it is the contract. So your escrow instructions are the purchase agreement, alright? And again, if anybody has questions, feel free to chime in. I'm gonna move quickly through this, so we can get as much as we can done and get as many questions done. A listing agreement is an agreement between seller and buyer, salesperson and broker, seller and salesperson, seller and broker. So a listing agreement is an agreement between... Alright, most of you got it right, seller and broker. So seller and salesperson, again, as we talked about earlier, when you sign an agreement, it is not, the salesperson is never the person that is actually, they sign it, they're signing on behalf of the brokerage, they're signing on behalf of the firm. So any agreement, buyer-agency, listing agreement, that client is signing with your brokerage and your firm. The firm is responsible for the client, you are too, because you're responsible to the firm. So you're acting on behalf of the firm. So it's between the seller and the broker. Seller and the buyer, that would be a purchase agreement to form a contract, so not a listing agreement, alright? A broker lists a home which cannot terminate this agreement? Death of a broker, death of a seller, seller bankruptcy, or death of a salesperson? And a reminder, the faster you answer these questions, the more points you get. Alright, death of a salesperson. So that is it, so that's the only one that cannot terminate the agreement. So again, for those of you that read it and didn't read cannot, that's a common thing in your real estate exam. You'll read it and think, oh, you know, this can terminate, you know, this can terminate an agreement. So remember, it's, you have to read the questions carefully, because they're training you to read contracts and to read purchase agreements and look for wording that, yeah, you read it wrong. And so that's really common, and that's gonna be something you have to watch out for in your test. And it's worth reading things twice, just to make sure you understand the way they're wording it, because it is a common occurrence. So, yeah, death of a salesperson is the only one that cannot terminate the agreement, because as we talked about, the agreement isn't actually between the salesperson and anyone there. Alright, an out-of-state prospect, ask an agent to locate a diverse neighborhood for him. This agent should not take the prospect, show the prospect the diverse neighborhood, state that research of this nature is beyond the agent's scope of authority, or research the population trends in the neighborhood. Right, so state, everybody got that right, except a couple. So if you're not allowed to research the population trends in the neighborhood and give that to them, that violates fair housing. So what you would do is you would then take, you would tell them where they can go and research the population trends in the neighborhood. You can give them websites to go to, you can give them resources. You yourself, as an agent, cannot do that for them. That is up to them to do. And 15 seconds is a short time, we do have a lot of questions to go through. So that's kind of why it is that way. And the media, the way I do that to cover it up, so you don't have the answer right away, it gives you the answer at the end, you just gotta read it. I know that's hard to do that quickly. And at the same time, this is so you can, you know, go through the questions, and if you can do it quickly, you can do it in a long time, too. So I get that it can be a little difficult, we're doing the best we can, and we're trying this out. This is only the second time we've done this with Akut, so hopefully we can keep improving, making it better. I'll take that consideration for the future, and see if we can make this a better process. Alright. In a suit brought under the federal Fair Housing Laws amended, punitive damages may be as much as $10,000, $1,000, $50,000, or there is no limit on the punitive damages under a federal fair housing law. There is no limit. So be careful, do not violate fair housing law. There is no limit to the punitive damages. So just know that there is, and I know some people put $10,000, and that's because when you look at it, you'll see that an individual can be fined by $11,000 for a HUD violation, the Fair Housing Act, and $55,000 for a third offense within the past seven years. There's no limit on punitive damages, though. So that's the difference. Alright. Let's keep it going. Complaints based on Title VIII should be filed with the Office of Equal Opportunity, National Civil Rights Commission, local board, or National Association of Realtors? Alright, Office of Equal Opportunity, almost everyone got that right. So Title VIII is Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Act amendment, and it prohibits discrimination in sale, rental, and financing of dwellings. So you would go to the Office of Equal Opportunity. Alright. Let's go. Oh, we got, look here in the waiting room. There we go, alright, so on to the next question. Net income best describes potential gross income? Income before expenses, income after expenses, or effective gross income? Okay. Alright, almost everyone got that right, it's income after expenses, so it's your net. Think about like your pay. Gross pay is before taxes, net pay is after taxes. So think net after expenses. So it's what you actually bring in. So think about a fisherman bringing in the net, it's what you actually bring in. So that's your net. So it's your income after the expenses, what you actually earn, okay? The salesperson will have a buyer sign an Ohio State Agency Disclosure Form at the closing, prior to qualifying the buyer, prior to writing an offer, prior to showing the properties? Only two answers so far, this must be a tough one. So when do you have them sign an Ohio Agency Disclosure Form? Alright, so prior to writing an offer. So, yeah, it's, you know, there's the consent form, that's at first contact, the disclosure form is prior to writing an offer. That's the official ruling, is that you should have that done prior to writing an offer. So at the closing is definitely too late. And you will be fine for that if they catch you. So a lot of times what they'll do, especially if you ever have to show your work to the Real Estate Commission, they're gonna look, and that's one of the things they'll check. Whether you're the offending party or not, they're gonna check both sides of that deal. So if anything happens where the Real Estate Commission is gonna review the deal, they're gonna check both sides, and if you haven't dotted your i's and crossed your t's, you'll get a slap on the wrist, too. So even if you brought it up because the other party did something wrong. Is that one state or national? That's a state. Are we talking about, I might have missed this, no, this is for this question. So, yeah, Ohio State Agency Disclosure Form, although, yeah, it's state, because agency disclosure is different in other states where you have to do it. A disabled tenant was denied permission to install a handlebar in the shower. What law has the landlord violated? The Fair Housing Act, ADA, no law has been violated, or the Civil Rights Act of 1866? So that's the ADA. Alright, everybody got that, Fair Housing Act, and that makes sense, because disabilities are part of the Fair Housing Act. And at the same time, think whole house for the Fair Housing Act, outside of the house, the whole house, buying or selling of the property, think interior and specifics for ADA. And to go back to your question on is that one state or national? So on the state, there are two topics that are the most important. 30 of your 40 questions are either license laws and rules, or brokerage relationships. So those are the two big topics in state. If you have those topics and you understand them at a high level, then you've got 30 of the 40 questions you're gonna be asked, and that's, you should be able to get 70%, no problem, if you're answering most of those correctly, okay? So, yeah, ADA. ADA is the specifics, Fair Housing Act is the whole. Sorry, property is valued at $100,000 and is taxed at 45 mils. The assessment rate on the property is 35%. The yearly tax is, and I don't know if there's a way to pause this. I don't think so, I know this is gonna take a little bit of time. The math ones always do. So I'll give you a minute. Although mils should be easy to assess. Alright, we have a split, and here's why. So 1575 versus 15.75. So to solve the problem in a simple formula, so you have the appraised value of $100,000, and that's why I said it was pretty simple, because we have a straight number of $100,000. So you multiply it by the assessment rate of 35%, this will give you the value of 35,000. Next, you take the assessed value and multiply by the millage rate of 45, but you have to divide your answer by 1,000, so a mil means one per thousand. So that's how you get it up to 1575. And I know that's probably not that easy, and at the same time, this is something that you will need to know, they are gonna ask- They are gonna ask you math questions. Um, so this is one of them, uh, that, you know, and again, the questions change. So it may or may not be on the test. And at the same time, uh, good to know for the test. Ask me if you need to know it after the test? No. Um, you know, so at the same time, it's good to know agents shouldn't have that knowledge. Okay? All right. Which court has the deceased? Probate Court, Federal District Court, Mayor's Court, or Family Court? I just throw in like some Judge Judy or something like that in these answers. All right. So it is probate court. All right. Most everyone got that one. So yeah, probate handles, uh, of the deceased, estates of the deceased. Little bit of movement there. All right, Becky on the come up. If a property has an assessed value of 87.5 and the level of assessment was 35%, what is the value of the property? We kind of went over this with the 100,000 one a minute ago. So you, instead of multiplying it, you would divide it. Cause you multiplied it to get it on the 100,000. All right. Yep, 250,000. So you take the, this one, divide it by 35% and you get that number. Ooh, Becky on the move. Way to go. The act of government taking private property for public use with just compensation is condemnation, a sheet, eminent domain, or taxation? Three answers so far, four? Five, there we go. I bet I see a bunch of them now. Okay, so it was a split between eminent domain and condemnation. So again, this is one of those questions that you have to be mindful of how it's written. So the act of government taking private property is condemnation. The rule that they use to do it is eminent domain. So that's, you know, that's why. So this is the act of it. This is the rule of it. This is what they use to do it. So that's the difference there. So again, another one that paying attention to how it's worded gives you the answer. Cause you know, it would seem like this is the right answer. You know, eminent domain is what they use to take property. But this is the act of doing it. All right. A brief summary of a property's history listing all recorded documents that may affect title is a certificate of title, title insurance, title report, or an abstract of title. Okay, got some people that know this one? Let's see how many had it right. All right, excellent. So it's an abstract of title. We've had some people say title report. Um, so that's a little different. Um, hang on, got someone coming in. So let me get them in the room. All right. Um, okay. And let's go. And if you didn't see it. All right. Okay. All right. Moving along, 26. Refusing to make loans on racial composition of a neighborhood is called blockbusting, exclusionary zoning, steering, or redlining? All right, almost everyone got that right. Uh, redlining deals with loan, steering deals with agents pushing people to different neighborhoods. Uh, exclusionary zoning has to do with government creating zoning laws to keep people out. And blockbusting was, uh, you know, bringing in people to make other people leave, uh, the neighborhood. Um, and so agents used to sell a house to someone the neighborhood felt was undesirable to get, to create a scare and get people to move out so that they can then resell the properties, uh, and take advantage of the situation. So, uh, that's the difference. All right. Mortgages are recorded in order to assure amortization payments, comply with the truth in lending regulations, transfer title to the mortgagee, or create a valid lien. All right, almost everyone had it right. Create a valid lien. Okay? All right, TWM on top, LS with the on fire. For a conventional loan, how much of a borrower's income can be used to service debt? 36%, 28%, 33%, or 29%? One answer so far. All right, it is 36%. Uh, so 28% is that other number. Um, so, uh, let's see. It's been a while since I've had to look at the lending rules. So the 36% is used to service all debt. 28% is just the revolving debt, or actually just, just the, um, loan itself. So you can do 28% for the loan itself and then 30, 36% is for the total amount of debt. All right. Highest answer streak of seven, way to go. What will happen if an applicant is charged with misconduct either prior to, during, or after the examination? So this relates to you all. The applicant will be charged with the misdemeanor. The application will be denied. The applicant will have to immediately reapply and retest. The applicant sponsoring broker will be suspended. There you go, all of you had it right. What is not an example of real property? A salt pump, a shed, drapes, or a bathtub? You're right, drapes. So a salt pump. Um, so again, anything property would be anything that's attached to the house that would make it seem permanent. So if, just like a painting, if you can lift it up and take it off the wall, then it is not permanent and it is not an example of real property. But if it's bolted to the wall, so that wall mounted television, that it's bolted to the wall and as long as it's bolted to the, you know, the actual hanger, then that's real property. If you can lift the television off the, the mount, then it's not real. The mount is real property and the television is not. So that's the difference. If it's affixed to the home in a way that would make it seem permanent, it is real property. All right, we'll go through a couple more of these. What type of deed would a buyer of real property prefer? A sheriff's deed, special warranty deed, general warranty deed, or a quitclaim deed? All right, we're still at six. Come on, who's the holdout? All right, yes, a general warranty deed. Uh, so some of you said a quitclaim deed. Uh, quitclaim deed is not, you're not going to get, uh, like, uh, title protections on a quitclaim deed as, as you would on a general warranty. Uh, general warranty is the most protected you will be as a buyer. From where does the real estate licensee get the 19 Articles of the Cannons of Ethics? Ohio Association of Realtors? The Ohio Real Estate Commission? The National Association of Realtors? Or the Division of Real Estate? The Cannons of Ethics? Ohio Real Estate Commission. So we got a couple here. Usually you get a bunch of National Association Realtors, okay? So yes, the Ohio Real Estate Commission does the Cannons. Um, so the Ohio Association of Realtors now. Um, and if it, anything that is Realtors, it's gonna come from the National Association of Realtors, cause NAR runs all of the boards. So if it's, if it's done from a Realtor's standpoint, NAR is the one who put it forward. So that that one's not done from a Realtor's standpoint, it's done with the Ohio Real Estate Commission. Code of Ethics is the National Association of Realtors, that's your board. They do the Code of Ethics, not the Cannons of Ethics. What must be contained in the HUD Fair Housing poster? Address of the Ohio Civil Rights Commission? Explanation of the Ohio Fair Housing Laws? Address of the Ohio Division of Real Estate? Or address of the Ohio State Attorney General's Office? All right, we had some split there. So, um, address the Ohio Division of Real Estate. So they have to give you the address of that because that's who you would submit your issues to. Uh, if you were, felt you were violated with fair housing. Um, so the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, uh, doesn't have to be on the Fair Housing poster. Uh, same thing with, uh, explanation of the Ohio Fair Housing Laws. It doesn't have to be there. They, they just have to give reference of it. All right, 654, we'll do one more. The amount a broker may charge for a commission is set by state law, negotiable in the listing contract, state in the Cannons of Ethics, or set by the Board of Realtors? I made a error there, stated in the Cannons of Ethics. So is it set? Or is negotiable? Or is it in the Cannons? It is negotiable. There are no set charges. Uh, so there's no such thing as a set charge for commission. You can negotiate, you negotiate that with the client. Uh, so your firm may have something that they recommend and at the same time is between you and the client, the, the firm and the client essentially. The firm has to agree with it and the client has to agree. So. All right, we got time. The principal broker has the following duties except overseas and direct operations, oversee direct operations, comply with fair housing documentation requirements, comply with office requirements, or prepare listing agreements? What is the job of the principal broker except? What do they not have to do? What's the one thing on there they don't do? All right, excellent. Um, yes, that is one of their jobs, complying with office requirements. And I know why some people got that is because it says, you know, compliant offices. So this is something they have to do. They have an obligation to have and comply in offices. So that is something they have to do. Preparing listing agreements is not the broker's job. It is the salesperson's job. I feel like we can go a couple more. An in-company transaction is one in which agents from different brokerages represent parties, seller and buyer are both licensed real estate agents in the same brokerage, different agents from the same brokerage represent the buyer and seller, or the buyer uses the same title company as the seller. In-company transaction. All right, most people got that wrong. Okay, so different agents from the same brokerage represent the buyer and seller. So that's what an in-company transaction means. So if I see a property, I'm Keller Williams. So if I see another Keller Williams property, it would be an in-company transaction. So what did you think? Seller and buyers are both licensed real estate agents in the same brokerage. Um, so that's the seller and buyer. Um, so I, I get why you would think that. It's, they're two agents selling to each other. Um, but that's not what that means. It means that agents are representing the buyer and seller. So that's an in-company transaction. Not the agents themselves being the buyer and seller. Oui, TWM, Becky making a comeback with three in a row. All right. The buyers had no idea there were different ways to make, take ownership. They need your help, you should. Usually married couples want survivorship so they can avoid probate court. Advise them to ask their attorney. Advise them to ask their family how they took title or give all the details you know about the different co-ownership. So this is a great one that I like to talk about. You know, when it comes to title and ownership, there are certain things that you want to advise them to ask an attorney. Um, I come from, you know, my background is I was an agent in an attorney state. Uh, so it was really easy for me to come from that background and say, you should talk to your attorney. Um, so we don't, we're not necessarily the person that can handle that. Cause that's a law question. Like, how do you want it set up? Think about like if you were setting up a will. Your job isn't to set up that will. So how they wanna take survivorship? If they know, then that's great. They can tell you. But your job isn't to advise them on that. You can point them in the right direction. The thing is, is to advise them to ask their attorney. Um, and this is great. Give all the details you know about the different co-ownership. That's great for, you know, as far as, you know, just being a good agent, making sure you give them information that they can use. Uh, and at the same time, uh, you know, if they need help and they want help, your job is to put them towards someone who can give them the right kind of help. All right. So let's see, where are we at? Who won? TWM with 22,704. And Alana coming in second with 16,000, LS with 15. Close, close race between third and fourth there and Ashley coming up in fifth. So, uh, again, this was only the second time we've tried it in this format. Uh, if, if it is working for you, that's great. If you wanna go back to the puppy cram way, we can do that as well. Um, you know, this is definitely a work in progress figuring out what works best, what's helping you the most. I'm happy to take your suggestions. Uh, you know, we wanna make sure that you're getting as prepared as possible for the test. And, you know, just felt this might be a fun way to do it. So if there's, uh, definitely some suggestions or feedback, uh, we welcome that. Uh, we are at seven o'clock. If you want to continue, there are only like a few left. I can keep going if you want to. If you wanna hop off, you're welcome to do that as well. Uh, way to go, Jimmy. Glad you enjoyed it. Um, so again, if, uh, if you wanna hop off, you can hop off. And I, I see, sure, let's do it. So I'm gonna keep going for those who wanna stay on, uh, and just kind of burn through these last questions. And then we can get, get you out of here. The purpose of the Ohio Real Estate Cannons of Ethics is to bring professional standing to the practice of real estate, eliminate part-time sales agents, make it harder to get a real estate license, or produce revenue for the state of Ohio. Number one, everybody got that right, so we're gonna move on. If the title to property is held for the benefit of a beneficiary, this legal arrangement is called a trust, a corporation, limited partnership, or general partnership? Held for a beneficiary? Alright, everyone got that one right. You know, they say success leaves clues, so the people who are still here are rocking and rolling. What would enhance the value of real property? A picture of Mona Lisa hanging in the hallway? A toxic waste dump being built next door? An above-ground pool or a two-car garage? I don't know that Mona Lisa, if it was real. Alright, everybody got that. So, you know, above-ground pools, again, this is one of those things where it can go either way. Some people look at an above-ground pool as a liability. People could get hurt. Someone could fall in and drown. Insurance looks at it as a liability as well. So you have to pay higher insurance premiums to have a pool. So, just, I had a, a client that had, uh, an amazing garden. And it was built by, you know, some famous gardener who did all this elaborate stuff. And they were like, this should make the house sell for more. I said, well, that puts it in a really niche category because most people will look at that and say, that's a lot of work and I don't wanna do it. So, you know, some things that people may hold value for, other people won't. But a two-car garage, that's gonna add value because that's real property attached to the property. Alright, forty-one. Effective gross income best describes a gross income in an ideal situation with no vacancy and collection losses, gross income minus debt service, gross income minus a figure for vacancy and collection losses, or net income? Effective gross income. Alright, so we got a pretty good spread there. So yes, it is gross income minus a figure for vacancy and collection losses. Uh, so that's your effective gross. Um, so, you know, you, you could say, I mean, in an ideal situation with no vacancy and collections, that's not the, that's not effective. That's not the effective gross. And we're gonna move through this quickly, so this is gonna be your answer. Alright. Forty-two. What are known cancer-causing agents called? Cigarettes, carcinogens, viruses, or disease? Carcinogens. Alright, everybody got that. The hazardous material used to make insulation for heating ducts in houses is called radon, lead, asbestos, urea formaldehyde insulation. So this is in heating ducts, insulation on heating ducts. And it's very, very common in this area. You will see a lot of it. Asbestos, there we go. So insulation, uh, that, think about insulation as being in the walls to protect from heat and, uh, and cooling loss. Um, radon is an odorless gas that comes out of the ground. Uh, so, and lead is what was in paint prior to nineteen seventy-eight. So asbestos is what's wrapped, um, around your, to insulate the heating ducts. So, and I guess they say insulation for heating ducts, but, uh, when you think urea formaldehyde insulation, that's what's going in the walls. Ooh, Becky on the move. A real property transfer fee of one mil on the sale of real estate at a total consideration of sixty-three five hundred equals six dollars thirty-six, six thousand three hundred and fifty, six hundred and thirty-five, or sixty-three fifty? Think one per one thousand. One dollar for every thousand. Alright, just about everybody got that. So it's sixty-three, the one dollar for every thousand. That's a one mil on the sale of real estate. So it's one dollar for every thousand dollars, so sixty-three dollars fifty cents. Alright, Becky, way to go. What is the fee to transfer a real estate salesperson's license from one brokerage to another? Twenty-four dollars, thirty-four dollars, ten dollars, or fifteen dollars? Alright. Okay, we had a few people guess fifteen. It's thirty-four dollars, so that's the fee to transfer your licensed from one brokerage to another. Let's go. There you go. Alright, Alana, number three. And Becky at number two. And, and come on, let's give it up for Becky though, too. Becky wasn't even on the board at one point. So, way to go. And TWM coming in on top. So. Congratulations, you guys, you made it through. Uh, thank you for staying. And again, uh, you know, these are things that we're working on to make it fun. Uh, you know, keep you learning. And happy to, to break it up, go back to copy cram. I mean, I, I have it pulled up at the top here. You can always go back to this. Uh, so just, uh, you know, let us know with feedback. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Uh, you know, my email, I'm sure you, you guys have been getting my emails. So, uh, you know, if you have any questions about what's going on or real estate, or no copy cram, alright, good. I, I like this too. I think it's more fun. And I'll keep adding more questions, uh, and, uh, put a whole new slide deck together. That way we have, uh, some different stuff that we can go through since we've gone through this one a couple times. And, uh, yeah, every, every Tuesday, six o'clock. Look forward to seeing you there and, uh, and let us know when you're ready to go ahead and pull the trigger and, uh, get sponsored and get your application down for the exam if you haven't already. If you're done with classes, we're happy to submit those for you. Uh, just come in, meet with me, we'll talk about it and, um, get you, get you all set up. Alright, alright, everybody, have a great night. Thank you so much for being here. And, uh, like I said, let us know if you need anything.